We'll hear a presentation, I think, Sarah, on some of the work in progress for the school budget and then just have a conversation around that and kind of see where we are at the end of the evening and talk about what that means and next steps.
Yes.
Does that work for everybody?
Sounds great.
Good. So I'll start, kind of keeping up where I left off with the Finance Committee last week, was it, April 24 meeting? We kind of closed that session with Sharon McHugh, a number of thoughts. The Finance Committee took no action. We thought it would be good to kind of brief the full crowd on some of those things. And even since then, there's a couple of other items I'd like to bring to your attention. So the top categories really all relate to capital adjustments. And I would put them in three categories. One is deferment of certain capital projects. You can see them there. There's a renovation of the planning department, deferment of Capitol Hall, excuse me, Town Hall, carpet replacement, and then there's a final piece of a subsurface drainage assessment that we can defer to a future year. So that totals $132,000. The next category under capital really amounts to how we choose to finance them. I propose to appropriate monies to finance some of the lower value, the kind of, those items with lower life expectancy as well. So you'll see a whole host of options there. I can provide further detail, but a number of those departments, there's multiple pieces associated. And then the last one was related to an equipment reserve account. The Finance Committee has long desired to establish a program where we start saving toward funding future capital projects. And I guess that begs the question, is this the year that we should start or is that something we can defer? That's up in front of me as well. The other adjustments I would bring to your attention is debt service costs. The council just approved last week issuance of about $7.6 million in bonds. There's obviously debt cost associated with that. I'll claim the responsibility, I kind of missed it in terms of carrying a number, but that's part of refinement that unfolds before our eyes. There's also some other kind of complicating factors, and I don't profess to understand all the details, but there, we do expect some level of bid premium associated with this bond issue. There's a lot of mystery in my mind, and there's not much certainty in terms of what that's going to be, but over the last four bond issues, we have received bid premium. Last year it was very sizable, and we were able to use it to offset cost of issuance. We actually ended up borrowing less than we had authorization. So I think there's the potential for that. I'm not confident enough to tell you what that is and how that will affect from a budget point of view. In a positive light, we do expect additional excise tax revenues, so comfortably, I think we can go up another $125,000. That will bring us to what we expect to end this fiscal year with. And so maybe a discussion point either tonight or for Wednesday for the Finance Committee is, there may be further room there as well. And lastly, for the first time in many years, we're actually starting to see some return on our investments. The interest rate is creeping up, but we do have sizable investments, and so it does add up. So we're confident in increasing that estimate by another $25,000. So all total, those factors considered, bring us to about $730,000 change. And again, the Finance Committee has not taken any action, and I just kind of thought that was a decent place for this conversation to start tonight, and then maybe we'll learn more from our school colleagues about some possible adjustments on their side of the equation as well. Please answer any questions you have.
Just please, quick question, Tom. So I know the debt, the new debt service is kind of a new item. Do you think by going back to the bond agent and other things that we can work up some best guess at what the bond premium might be in the next week or so, or is that?
I could find out as soon as Wednesday night whether he has any ability to predict that with some level of clarity. I think that's going to be a bit of a stretch. As I understand the bond premium, it's a way for investors, they actually are hedging against what they expect to be higher interest rates in the future, and so they end up paying a bid premium today to make sure that they account for that. And that could be sizable. It could, in the past, it's been approaching a million dollars. Last year was sizable, for sure. But of course, we borrowed twice as much last year as we are this year, so it's relative to the size of the bond issue as well. So I should be able to get clarity for Wednesday night on whether or not he could give us confidence there.
That'd be helpful. Council Jones?
Tom, the equipment reserve payment, is that the entirety of the first payment? So essentially this account won't exist?
Exactly. It doesn't exist today either.
Yeah, right. It's going to continue to not exist?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, our goal was to try, it was, we were, in six years, the way our policy is written, we're supposed to get there. So we were trying to take a sixth of the nugget that we needed.
Yep.
But it's the same question as, is it the right time?
And what was your nugget, your nugget was $1.2 million, or?
No, it's...
It's a little bit of a million.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, six times, yeah, yeah, whatever that is, yeah.
Anything else, sir?
Hey, Tom, I want to thank you for this. You know, with each pass, we get more granularity, so thank you for that, and thank you for taking the initiative to, you know, to respond to the request. But I am a little curious, you know, the kind of words that jump out to me are deferment, shift, postponement. So how much of these would really, you know, if any of these would really classify as true reductions?
Well, I would say deferments are true reductions. You'll have another go around and conversation whether it's a priority that makes the list next year. So I think you can comfortably say that that's a true adjustment. The other ones are really choices in terms of how we choose to finance our needs.
Great, okay, thanks.
Would you normally have, these five vehicles that are listed between the shift from cash to financing, we would norm, under, let's say, last year's budget, would we have financed these under normal conditions? Was this part of you taking direction of trying to bond less?
Yeah, that's been a goal for many years, and with some limited success, we've done more and more through operating or appropriation. This year was by far and away the most aggressive I've ever been as a kind of a starting point.
Yeah.
And it's really a place where I think we need to get to. I think it's going to help immeasurably, but it's just a matter of when is the timing right to do that?
Just the last question, Tom. So on the things that we have shifted from appropriation to financing, which is a $441,000 change, does that include a little bit of debt service? I mean, is it net of the debt service in those items, or is that another, something we need to factor in?
Debt service for this, for these items would not be seen in FY 2020. It would be a 21 consideration.
Pushed down.
Right. We would not be actually borrowing for these until this time next year.
Yeah, it's the same.
Right.
Does anybody else in general have any questions for Tom?
I'll just go back to Paul's question around, you know, the long-term kind of goal or strategy and the shift, and that's been coming to you from, mostly from the Finance Committee, correct?
Yeah, it's been an ongoing conversation for at least the four years Peter's been there, I know that.
Yeah. But some, I mean, what I would say and what I hear all the time is there are a lot of arguments for good debt versus bad debt, and sometimes taking on debt makes sense in certain situations. So that's really just a matter of kind of opinion and policy versus one thing's better or not than the other and going forward.
Yeah, and...
Is that fair?
That's absolutely fair. And let me be even clearer on that point. We've talked about financing, some of these are financing for as low as three years and five years in most cases. So we're being very thoughtful. We're not being foolish in terms of pushing these out 10 or 15, much less 20 years. So it's just financing them as opposed to raising the funds to buy them outright initially.
Anybody else? Anybody have any questions at all for the Town Manager?
We have vibe rates, Beth.
They're still remaining pretty competitive. Might be able to speak with more clarity on that.
Like a hammer today.
Interest rates are a little bit higher, I think. They're starting to creep up because the base has been recent rates. So we're looking between 4% and 5% right now. 3% and 5%.
We'll go war within a couple of weeks with our impending bond sale.
Still cheap.
I think I've heard that the bond rates go down instead because of China.
That's temporary.
Volatility of all schools.
That's temporary. Tweet ball until the...
It's crazy.
My calling.
So kind of going once, going twice?
Well, I just had a general question for people who might be watching and people who are not on finance. Can you talk a little bit about the, why there's been a direction from the Finance Committee to shift from appropriation to financing and what the benefit to that is? And, I mean, I assume some things need to be financed no matter what. Where's that coming from?
Yeah, we do have a policy that gives some guidance. Generally, anything under $100,000 in costs, and also its life expectancy needs to be considered in that. That's a pretty good barometer of, you know, where you should be, how you should be financing. But beyond that, it's a matter of preference and tolerance equated to your household budget. It would be great if you could save for your next car. Can you do that, or do you find a way to finance it? So it's not dissimilar in that regard. Other than the fact that there is a philosophy of borrowing, those that enjoy the goods and use a fire truck, a ladder truck is an example. Is it fair for folks to save for it over time and not have the value of its service? It's going to be a service for 20 years into the future after we buy it. So I don't think that philosophy works perfectly well in all cases, but I think it's a strong argument given certain capital projects.
I think the other factor is, we've actually, the Finance Committee has spent some time really trying to develop some metrics that we can really measure financially how we're doing as a town as compared to others. And one of the things that sort of, we have a pretty high debt per capita as compared to others. So some of that was thinking, how do other towns do things? We always compare ourselves without fail with some of the other communities. They do a little more of putting it through sort of operations rather than capital. So I think that was, we're just trying to look at that and try to get to a place that's kind of a happy place in between.
Yeah, and so the cycle we're on, just to exemplify that point, we're simply, we're essentially replacing, as we retire debt, we're taking on new debt. And so we're never making any headway. We're always around that $100 million. And we'll always have big-ticket items that are voter-approved that are the lion's share, but we're consistently borrowing four to six to seven million a year. And if there's another way to meet our needs without doing that, I think that's a laudable goal.
Tom, how much of that is because of the growth of Scarborough? I mean, Scarborough's been growing by leaps and bounds, so, you know, there's got, there's bound to be some increase in investment.
Sure, I would say the big-ticket items, the facilities, schools, and public safety, those sorts of things have a huge component associated with our growth, no question.
If I can add, Hillary, the other side too, it goes back to the Charter, and that is, there's a heavy reliance on reserves. So it says specifically that anything in excess of 8.3% of our reserves should go towards capital projects. At the same time, we're also fighting changes in accounting and changes in expectations from the credit market. And what they're now saying is instead of having one month's of debt service available or one month's of operating expenses available, they want us to really have two. And we're just barely over the 8.33%, we're at, I think, 8.8, some ways around there. So we have this competing kind of conflict in our budgeting where they want us to reserve more at the same time that we have requests for capital. So we're trying, we're trying to just find a balance between the two requests or the two methodologies.
Okay, thank you.
So, Tom, I had sort of a follow-up question here, you know, and I, this is focused primarily on the town side, and I'm expecting we're going to be seeing and hearing more detail from the schools this evening. But when we met last and we reviewed a handful of departments, we went through public safety, we went through community services and others, and there was a rest, if we wanted to hear from any others, or if there were questions that we had from other departments that we hadn't heard from. So my question is twofold. First is, there were specific questions, specific pushback on certain things like staff level additions and so forth that aren't, not part of your proposed adjustments here. So what can we help the public to understand in terms of, you know, if and when there would be any real response to that? Can I assume if they don't hear it again, it means the answer was no? Or is there a time when they can expect that they would really hear a response to that? And that would also include questions we received from citizens that were really quite specific.
Yeah, I guess I would characterize, I didn't hear pushback. I heard a presentation and discussion around, and a genuine interest in learning more about the need. I put it in my budget request because I thought it was appropriate, and as we sit here, I still do. Frankly, all members are present here, as I recall Chairman Blade Mine at the time said, we're going to hold off on making any final decisions pending this meeting.
Okay.
And I would hope that we leave tonight with some level of clarity at the end of it as to what the next step is.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think what we had, decided to have this conversation tonight, but Wednesday night, I think, is kind of designed, I think, Chairman, maybe that kind of asked us to send questions that we want Tom to be prepared to kind of answer, which I had sort of anticipated some of those.
Okay.
Maybe staffing questions.
Following on to this one.
Yeah. In fact, I saw a host of questions from you today that we prepared to answer.
And I think, Councilor, I think by Wednesday night, you would have a recommendation, is that our goal?
That's our goal.
To have a recommendation of thing, other things that may not be on this list that we'd bring forward, is that a fair statement?
Yeah. The goal is that the Finance Committee will have a vote and forward a recommendation to the Town Council for consideration at its next meeting.
Great, thank you.
And just for clarity's sake, so if you don't hear from us, then it's pretty safe to assume that we're pretty comfortable with the shifts and refinements that have already taken place? Is that, would that be your three's assumption? Or hope or goal coming out of tonight's conversation? I mean, I guess I'm, what I'm asking, if I were you and I'm sitting on finance, if there were other things that people were going to ask for, you'd want to know in advance of that meeting, correct? Is that fair?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But I've also learned over 20 years, that doesn't necessarily happen.
Of course. Right.
But I think that you're making a good point, that by our silence on these items, we're accepting, because we're not pushing back and saying we would prefer not to see those made. And I'm going to attend your meeting, Finance Committee meeting, I expect most of the Town Council will be there, because it's the deciding point for us on further adjustments. And to the extent that the Finance Committee members have, and all seven of us have suggestions, just as Peter, as Town Manager indicated, Peter had some ideas, we need to get those ideas out and circulated so that when the meeting occurs on Wednesday, we can have a really good discussion about that.
And Tom's prepared to trust him, yeah.
Yeah, and please recall, the Finance Committee's recommendation is just that, that's typically as a matter of courtesy, the First Amendment that's offered at second reading. That doesn't preclude a counselor from bringing any other matter forward. But to the extent that we can do this collaboratively, I think that's the best way to do it.
And I think I would add, the Council of Police, yeah, and I think part of tonight was sharing this, we had seen this.
Right.
And I think we're, you know, we haven't voted on it, it's going to be in the whole matrix of what we're talking about, but at least comfortable enough to see how all of you felt about it tonight. Because I think we're trying to vector tonight to, where are we? So I think if anybody, any Town Council members have any issue with this, it'd be good to know it tonight.
Right.
If not, we will, I think Sean will proceed with that it seems reasonable.
There's items up here that impact the school, so I would be open air and from our colleagues on the school board as well.
Any other questions on the town before we move to the next conversation? Everybody good?
Tom?
Yes.
Some people in the audience are indicating they can't hear very well.
Yeah, we all need it.
I think everyone needs to amplify.
Move forward. I mean, it's an ongoing issue we've been having about, just so you know.
Yeah, the challenge is, this is perfect, it provides for a really good broadcast, but it doesn't do a great job of amplifying in the council chambers. So please do move up. We'll do our best, everyone be mindful of raising your voice a bit. Sarah?
Good. Cool. So I'm handing out documents that can use.
Although I don't think it's going to change since the email. It has.
I just want to know.
I said it's the same, so I'm not sure. It might put the colors different.
That must just be the print. The color hasn't changed.
It's probably my printer.
Does everyone have a copy? All right, so I also have a couple slides just to go along with it, but this will be the, this document will form the basis of our conversation. So just as a reminder, the goals and the principles that we use when, or that Julie and the Leadership Council use when creating the project, but also those that we use when making adjustments are up on the screen now. So we're prioritizing our resources K-12, providing required and appropriate services based on student needs. We're responding to the growth in town, so the increased demands and enrollment K-2. We want to maintain existing programs and ensure student safety, expand 21st Century Offering, and then support our 500-plus employee base. So now if you refer to the document, we'll sort of start where we'll end. So if you flip it over to the back, that very bottom number, the $137,000, that's the total reduction to the tax request. So then if we kind of go back to the beginning, if you're reading this document, and I sent this out, so hopefully you guys all had a chance to look at it, the very top portion is the first reading. Everything that's in blue are proposed adjustments, and then the updated numbers are at the bottom. So I've included, again, for the audience and for anyone watching at home, I've included the items that we've made adjustments to up on the screen. The reason why there's no total down there is because those are coming from different areas, so some of them are from the operating budget, some of them are from moving from appropriation to finance, so it doesn't really make sense to have a total. But that's all reflected in this spreadsheet. So some of the key reductions, if we just start from the top and go down, so we've had updated numbers come in for both Anthem and Delta. So significant reduction from Anthem, not so much for Delta, but still a reduction nonetheless. The retirement projection change, so the stipend, paying out of stipend versus breakage, so $25,000 reduction there. We've reduced the IT operating budget equipment purchase line for the high school tech refresh, Reduced the fees for the $1,000 for the GSEA, the actual cost. So if our voters, and Julie will correct me if I'm wrong here, if our voters vote no to enter the GSEA, then that line will be removed. So that would actually be an increase, or sorry, a decrease.
We would have that $1,000 back.
Actually, if we... Right, right. We'd get that money back. But we lose $80,000. But we lose $80,000.
We traded in on $3,000.
Yeah, actually, in the original proposal, we budgeted $2,000 for the annual fee, membership fee, and it's actually only $1,000. So that's why you see that reduction there. And then, yes, if the voters say no, our overall budget will reduce by over $83,000.
Nice.
Yeah, so while we're on the topic, the GSEA is in the budget, so if we vote no, that $8, that $3,000 will be removed.
Yeah, it's a no.
Which is why it's important for us to all be communicating that we should vote yes on the municipal question one. So the $9,000 reduction in the expected cost for Volk School. And then if we go down to the next section, so those were just, the top section was basically estimates and then adjustments based on the final numbers that came in. And then below, we've added in unified basketball. So, you know, if you remember, it wasn't in the original first budget proposal. We've had a significantly reduced estimated cost due to the ability that we've been able to receive a grant. 99% sure that we'll get that grant, I think is the language that we're using, as well as just some more realistic estimates. We've reduced our strategic planning budget, it was originally in there for $15,000. We've reduced that down $5,000 to $10,000. This next one is an increase, so, and I'll probably let Julie or Kate explain this a little bit better than I can, but some of our students, based on their needs, they, we're, they're having an out-of-district placement. So that's what the out-of-district line means, and the main care is basically if those families are refusing for a variety of different reasons, main care, that cost gets put back on the school. So this was added cost based off conversations that have happened since first reading. And this number is likely to change between now and the next couple of weeks as we continue through, or as our, the staff continues through the IEP moves. Anything added to that? Does that say it right? Other items that we've reduced from the capital budget would be the plumber gym's sound system. We've removed that completely, as well as deferring the plumber and alumni gym scoreboards. We've removed that completely and deferring that for next year. The bus purchase amount, that was based off of the BW rebate. So the DEP made an arrangement with vendors that said, instead of us paying the full amount and they rebate us back, they're just taking $75,000 off the top of it. So that's why you see the reduction in here versus what was in the first budget. The debt service line, so that's a line, that's a decision that the Council needs to make on whether or not they defer the principal payment. So that's up for discussion and potentially an item in motion, but right now, based on what we've heard, we've added that as a reduction. And then if you switch to the back, so the $45,000 truck, that was in Tom's CIP, and also, I should have said, the plumber gym and the scoreboards would also go on Tom's sheet, because those are capital items as well, if we continue and decide to remove those.
Yeah, but I wasn't hearing them, so it's good that you reflect them separately here.
Yep.
So just the truck appears on the town sheet, not the scoreboards or the sound system?
They've not described the value to it, so I guess...
So it is not double counted?
No, no, okay. So items that are still in motion, so we're still going through kindergarten registration. As of right now, the projections remain true, so we think that we'll have significantly increase enrollment, as we've been saying. Allison, the special services staff are about halfway through the IEP, individual IEP meetings. Based on where they are today, they believe that there could be a potential of ed tech support needed. However, there's still, we still have halfway to go through those IEPs, so it's not something that we're willing to take out of the budget now, without knowing that for sure. And then the out-of-district tuition, obviously I added a plus there with just a, we never know if that's going to go up. Workers' comp, I already said, and the debt service, that's a decision for the Council to make. We also recently found out that there's still about $500,000 left in the Impact Fees budget, and there are a number of items in capital improvement that we believe would qualify for that type of funding source. So again, that's a decision that the Council would have to make, but we wanted to make that known here, because there's, if you add that up, I think it's just over $400,000 that could potentially be funded by Impact.
And sorry to clarify, those are in the current budget?
Yes, correct, yep.
The Impact?
What's that?
The Impact Fees are in the budget, aren't they?
No, but these asks are.
Except for the last one, the Pleasant Hill modular, which is why there's no price there.
Either Ruth or, can I ask, can you refresh my memories from the last meeting we had regarding the Impact Fees? After the last allocation we just approved, what's the balance in that Impact Fees account now?
Now, before the FY '20?
Well, whatever we just approved was $200, $300,000.
$260.
$260? Well, so what's the balance after that? Or even before, because I can figure it out.
509. It's 509.
So after it's 509?
509,000, 500...
Because we're appropriating that 700,000, or estimating use of that 700,000 out of those funds for FY '20, a portion of it for school and a portion for town.
In debt service. In debt service.
Right, so there's a total of $769,000 in this FY '20 budget already. I shouldn't say that, $260 of which goes to the modular, so that's not in the budget necessarily. 509 is in for... is in for debt service. That is in the budget for sure.
So if we went and said, yeah, great, use that, that we're going to reduce our debt service by 509, if we use the impact fees for these, correct?
I think what's left after you take into account what I just said, there's about $457,000 is our...
Okay, okay.
Thank you. If you use it now, it will not be available for debt service offset next year. So it's, it's one of those, if you're poisoned.
But presumably, we'd also have more added to the impact fee account next year.
Presumably, yeah. Our practice has been to use the actual receipts from two years ago. And the reason we even had the modular discussion is that we had a banner year two years ago, since that we received over $700,000 that year.
But on average, the surplus each year is in the order of 300 to 400 that we generate?
Yeah, between 250 and 300 for the last 20 years on average. I think we saw a spike with the multifamily development. It was just a flurry of development all at once, and they pulled permits. So I don't think that's sustainable. I know it's not. But I think historical levels we can always expect.
But what would be budgeted next year is on the total receipts from last year, last year, which is still lower. So while they're using $506,000 for debt service, it's going to be probably, I think, if I remember the numbers on the sheet, it's like $100,000 lower.
It's 403,540.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. But it's going to be $100,000, just on the debt service side, we're going to have a gap on how he, you know, next year, $100,000.
Slight gap, yes. And that's, that's actual receipt, so that's not an estimate. We have that. And then we'll know what the performance was this year as well.
Tom, can you clarify what the 509,000 that's in the budget now is being, is going toward? Because I thought that Ruth just said some of it is being paid, school debt service, and some of it is for the town.
I characterize it as debt revenue, so there's ample school debt to cover many multiples of that. So I would, I would say it's all going towards school debt.
Thank you. Do you guys have anything to add before we just open it up to questions? April, Alicia?
We'd just like to add that I like this version much better than the one you sent before that had a lot of blanks. So this is nice, nice progress and moving in the right direction. So thank you.
The blanks was really just to show the line of the document, less the numbers.
Thank you.
No, I don't. Thank you. I have a question. On the superintendent search, it's my understanding that you are, you haven't found anybody yet, and you're going to an interim superintendent. Is that correct? Is that already figured in as far as payroll? I mean, whoever you've got coming in interim, do they come in July 1st, or are they coming in later? And are there any savings by delaying bringing someone in?
Sure. They'd be slated for a July 1 start, and at this point, it does not appear. I can't answer the question about savings.
Okay, right. And likewise for the high school principal position. I was just wondering if that's baked in anywhere.
So I'm interviewing the finalists tomorrow night, and we'll be bringing a recommendation to the board on May 16. And so we believe that we have adequate funding in the budget to support.
Okay. I was just curious, is that going to be filled right away too? Because I know the superintendent fills those and not the school board, so.
Just a point of clarification, too. We don't have the option to defer appointing a superintendent. I think it's a law that we have to...
No, I know that. But what, my thinking was that if you had an interim, is it less expensive than what you're paying now? Is there a delay, you know, one month, two month delay before you bring someone on? Do you have to have someone? That's all I was asking. Because obviously, that's cost savings. For a month, you're not paying a salary. But you have to have it until I won. Yeah, okay.
There cannot be a gap, but there could be a differential in the pay scale, which to your point could still, even if it's $10,000. But, you know, we know that $10,000 means everything sometimes.
Can you, one question you have, so it sounds like on the three buses, you guys, there's some type of grant monies that come back, that looks $75,000?
It's not that comes back, it's that it's the savings off the purchase price, so the vendor, discounted price off the original.
I could speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, I was just trying to plug the flow, because you've got 75, it looks like, as a reduction, and then 75 as a, sort of washes? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the reason it's a wash is because those buses were slated to be bonded in the first place. So if we're looking at a reduction in the tax ask, the tax request, then it's a net zero, because those funds were not meant to be part of the tax request from the schools anyway. But it's a reduction in our expenditure budget. Does that make sense?
And it's because it wasn't in your net ask, because there was no debt service on the buses next year in the ask, so that's why?
Not the debt service, but the fact that the buses were slated to be bonded in the first place. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't be paid for with tax dollars in FY '20.
Well, if they were bonded and there was debt service, they would be.
Not until FY '21.
But that's what you're saying, Tom, it hasn't that cycle, they didn't be bonded until late in the spring.
The bond wouldn't be issued until the spring.
Yeah, in the capital budget, we have anticipated bond proceeds, if you will, as a revenue. And so what Kate is saying is that we need to take $75,000 away from that. We don't need to borrow it in the first place. So it will help us long-term, not in FY '20.
We're bonding $75,000 less than we anticipated when we created the first meeting, because we're spending $75,000 less. And to speak to that point, originally, we put the value of the three buses in our budget as a full expenditure, because in the past, the model with DEP grants has been that you pay for the bus to the vendor, full cost, and then somewhere down the line, after you retire an old bus, an old, what I call a stinky bus, take that off the road, then you receive the grant revenues. So we weren't sure of the timeline of that. And then just last week, we found out that the DEP has made a different arrangement with this VW settlement grant, in that they are providing the funds directly to the vendor. So we can purchase the bus at a discounted rate.
Oh, so the money goes...
Right upfront.
The money goes to the bus manufacturer?
Exactly. So we don't have to shell out the money and then wait for it to be returned to us, which means that we can reduce our expenditure budget accordingly.
That's too bad for us. We get it, but it's just, that's confusing. Thank you.
That's probably Julie's question, I think. Out of district placement, do we, and if you can't, I should know this, but if you can't share, you can't share, and I get that too. How much, say, does the district have in what that looks like? So do you understand what I'm saying without going to another level of detail?
Yeah, it's a team decision, just like any other IEP decision, a developed education plan decision is. So the district is a part of the team, but ultimately, it's based on what's best for the student. And so we don't, it's really dependent upon what the programmatic needs are. That's what really drives the placement. Parents or families will often go and do site visits, but usually, we're selecting the placement based on some really specific criteria. And just for everyone's kind of general knowledge, our general rule of thumb is we try to keep all of our students in district. That's the least restrictive, so long as it's the least restrictive, most appropriate placement for that child. But there are times when the student might need a two-to-one type of ratio. And at that point, is when we start to say, is this the most efficient and effective placement for the child, or do we need to look out for, for a more specialized program?
Thank you.
I have a question on that as well. In determining the out-of-district main care potential fluctuations, is that something that you'll be able to determine at the end of the IEP process? Or is there the ability for parents to reject the main care at any point, and so it could fluctuate at any time during the year?
It fluctuates at any time during the year. It could be a parent elects to move away from main care billing in their current placement, and then it could change within, you know, a week. They could decide to go back. Sometimes it's, they need assistance filling out paperwork and things like that. In this case, we already are aware of at least one situation where we've been, had, having to retropay some bills. So that's what we're making our estimates based on, are those three months of retropayment. But it is something that's really volatile and could fluctuate.
I would add to that, that trying to estimate what's going on with special services in any budget year is challenging, because our students change, their needs change, their IEPs change. So this just adds an extra little layer of complexity to the funding that we need to make sure that these children's needs are cared for. But it is always volatile. And I think Allison's phrase is, she's only a phone call away from something that just changes everything.
I did have another question. So, and I had the opportunity to walk the track and the astroturf this afternoon. So those, those are still in the capital budget for 1.05 million, those improvements?
Yes. Okay. Requires voter approval, of course.
Referendum, they got a referendum. And they're going to go to referendum as one item, right?
Yes.
The track and...
Yeah, they are connected. They need to meet one item, one project.
So there'd be a referendum in the fall, then, or is it?
I presume, they would like to put it out as soon as this fall.
So the only thing I'd say about that is, and I don't mean to have one data point suggest as, you know, as a conclusion, but I talked to a couple of track coaches down there, and they, with reference to the track, which seems to be in better shape than the turf, the turf is really, it's falling apart. But they said the real issue with the track is they would like another couple extra lanes, not just six lanes. So that way, they could attract track meets and other things. So is that something, is still an open item?
I've not been directly involved, but I know Todd, Susan, and Michael Gage have been back and forth on this issue, that you're correct, eight lanes would be preferable. But you're talking about maybe grandstands and drainage. It's a far more complicated and expensive endeavor.
Yeah. So that's not in the number?
No, it's just to replace the current six lane track and the turf field.
Keep the status quo.
For what it's worth, this is anecdotal, but it's from someone that I know, and I trust their opinion. He's a longtime referee, and made the point to me that this is by far the worst field in the league. And we used to be the only, the best, and everyone else is, you know, replaced or built brand new. I think we're five or six years past its expected life, and so it's becoming to be a safety issue, I think.
Thanks.
Or not.
Highly reduced power.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the, on either budget at this point? Not seen any, I guess.
Well, I guess I'll ask one other question. So with these adjustments, it, at this point, still preserves most of the investments that you guys put forth as recommended, correct? Like in terms of new positions and whatnot?
Correct.
And to add to Katie's question, for both the school and town, there's not a, there's not a single position that's been adjusted between first...
Either side.
Correct, correct. So there is, so just to work clear, there's not a position on your end or your end, that is on either one of these sheets of paper?
So I had a question. So are we, if I do the numbers, so that, if we take the number that Tom shared of roughly 730,000 reductions with this number net decrease of 137 and change, so I guess, you know, by my count, almost 870, 870,000. So that's still roughly about 430,000 short of the 1.3 million that we said was the gap between the first reading number and 3%.
Yes, your mail, your mail is correct.
Does it, can anyone give me a number what that mail rate number would be produced with this?
Let us root to work it up. I'm not sure if she's, can she, second?
Yeah, so, thanks. Thank you. But I, I think this would be helpful for us to know kind of what, you know, we're closing the gap, we're making nice headway, you know, we got more, more time to talk about it. And I think we have other things, maybe other suggestions, not necessarily on the school side.
So that really is the next conversation. So where do we, where are we, and how do we, where do we go from here?
Yeah. I get accused of reading ahead often. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, that number would be helpful, just to know where we are.
I guess, too, I, I just wanted to reiterate what I heard from a couple of town counselors a couple of meetings ago, that this 1.3 didn't necessarily need to come from the school side in order for the budget to be supported. And I just want to, you know, say thank you to our finance committee in terms of the diligence, and to Superintendent Kupfer, in terms of the diligence that you guys exhibited to look at this budget in a thoughtful way, and to preserve the investments that we, we value, and to be creative in some reductions to try to help get to that 1.3 number. So thank you.
And if you have any further questions, I would encourage you to watch the two streaming school board finance meetings, because we did ask a lot of specific questions, and Julie and Kate in particular were able to give us a lot of in-depth information. And we really did try to think about many different machinations for, for making adjustments. So that may be helpful information as well.
Great, thank you.
And also thank you to Kate, because I know you've done yeoman's work throughout this process. Appreciate it. Should I say something about, oh, no, I'm the one-armed one. I used to be the sparkler unicorn, now I've broken. I'm getting those budget socks out.
So I guess with that, as, as we think of where we are, anybody have any views about, are we close enough? Do we need to get closer? Where's, what sort of conversation does our fault?
So that was going to be my question and/or comment, is a thank you to everybody involved in the adjustments and refinements so far. I feel much more comfortable with this and where we are right now, to the point where I could probably just stamp it and say yes. I'd look forward to further conversations to see what comes out of, is it Wednesday?
Wednesday for the town council.
But that's, I think, from a process standpoint, what I want to know, and I think what the public is, the biggest question on their minds is, is it Wednesday night when the finance committee finites, puts a final stamp on numbers, if there's anything else that needs to go forward, that's correct? That's when they would hear those numbers?
Say that again, so the question again?
Recommendations for any final...
So the first step, I would think, from a linear perspective, is that we would take up the recommendations that have been presented tonight, and then we would then have any additional amendments that come through the committee process.
Right. But Wednesday would be the night?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Wednesday would be the night we come up with recommendations that will come that to the full town council body.
Correct.
Yep.
So I, yeah, I want to thank everybody for the hard work and the progress. And we're really trending very nicely, you know, opinion of one. The one thing I would like to see, and I know that several suggestions have been made along the way, but I don't, I know that everybody is working hard with the funds that they have, but they're, I'm still missing some things that I think we could commit to, that fall in the area of doing things differently. And, and I think those, those included some things like looking at the businesses that we are in, the property that we hold, the services that we provide that may not be core services on either the school side or on the municipal side. So I'd really like us to take a pass at that, if there's any chance of that in the next meeting, in addition to whatever else we might be able to come up with as we press through another iteration. So that would just be a process suggestion and an aspiration.
Can you clarify what you mean by that in terms of the school side?
You know, I don't really know that I have a lot of ideas for the school side, frankly. But I guess I know that you guys are tight to the shekels and very creative about how you use money. And so, and I think you've demonstrated that in our discussions around various things, you know, going back to the modular discussion that wasn't really part of the budget cycle. So I don't know right offhand, on the, on the municipal side, there are things like, you know, do we really want to keep the property on black point red? Do we, you know, the school side, I would suggest, you know, is there a chance for us to look at things that we provide in terms of services? For example, janitorial services, property management expenses, that sort of thing. Now, this may be far afield and not really within our appetite or ability to get our arms around. But I really, I think with what we have... arms around, but I really, I, I think with what we have ahead of us in terms of pressure on capital spend and a lot of other demands that you've done a great job articulating, you know, is there at least, we can, is there a way for us to commit to starting the journey even if we can't make a specific quantitative commitment this time around? So that would be one.
When you identify those services, are you talking about the municipal side or the school?
Well, janitorial, for example. I mean, do we really need to have our own, you know, full-time janitorial staff and, you know, building management? And I know we, there's history with this and all kinds of issues around it, and I know Jim Marie are gonna have a long discussion over this over a month. So, just because it happened then doesn't mean it would happen again. So that, that would be an example. The other thing I could think of would be, the, and I just looked at it on a sheet here, but it would be the, it's just slipped in my mind, but it had to do with school lunches. You know, we run that as a loss leader for year after year after year, we're gonna get another $200,000, you know, budgeted loss, you know. Is it time for us to cut with the feds and figure it out on our own? I don't know.
You're gonna be very excited to hear this, John. We voted to cut with the feds at our most recent board meeting. We are out of, at the high school, we are out of the federal nutrition program and we are very fortunate to...
All right.
I also want to add, though, that every district in the state and regionally and countrywide does not make money on a lunch program.
Yeah.
So we're not alone in that. We're not a restaurant. But like, I, but we are making steps to April's point, I think.
You're leaning no stone on turf.
We're not gonna get rich, but...
That's right.
Pilot in a new program.
We'd like to break even.
And again, that's why I would encourage you to go back and look at those meetings because I think you'll find that many of those tough discussions have occurred in the school board finance meetings.
I will do that. Thanks.
So did you build, were there any, were there any adjustments for that in that budgeted loss because of switching?
Not yet.
Yeah, we haven't even made the change yet.
Right, we're gonna pilot it over the next couple of months and the school board already has planned to take it up in the fall to kind of assess the revenue aspect of it. Couple other things we did just by opening the school doors 20 minutes earlier, we're trying to promote breakfast and get families to, you know, want to purchase breakfast at school more because that's a good way for us to kind of balance the books, if you will. Plus what we're offering, trying to offer more whole foods, more natural foods, lots of fresh fruits and vegetables that, you know, our students are eating at home, we want to mirror that at school. And we're not, it's not an option for us to step away from the feds with the K8 nutrition program.
I understand.
That's only a possibility.
Donna, it may not give you comfort, but for years, until two or three years ago, we simply didn't fund that deficit that was always running in the black. Hit the bullet, so to speak, three years ago, I think, and it funded, never sent. So at least we're recognizing that through the budget process.
Thank you.
There's a cost and it's not just a way to use fund balance.
Terrific, thanks. Do you have the magic answer, Donna?
I do. Really?
Oh, that's my dumb one.
Here we go. If we look at the, you want the mid-range?
Yeah.
The mid-range tax rate adjustment would be still issuing at a 3.60% increase over last year. The net budget is at 4.7%.
So that gap of 4.50 is... Four thirty, you said? Is that the number you used, 4.30-ish? 4.33?
Can I shift gears? Are we sticking with the school or are we bouncing all around?
Bounce.
Can we just bounce?
We can just bounce.
Okay, so...
It's a technical term.
Yes, right.
Yeah, we can just bounce.
So I think at the department presentations, I think Peter did not push back but wanted a little bit more information on the rough mower ask for $86,000, I believe it was. And I believe Tom had, and Todd had committed to getting a little bit more background behind that. Is there an update on the rough mower ask? Did I get the number right?
Yeah, I think it's about 70 or something.
Is it 70?
Seventy.
But Tom's got that, is, that'll be a conversation Wednesday night.
Okay, so we're not gonna have it here, we'll have it.
We can start here, you know, it's, it's part of our process improvement. We're, we're trying to move more to do a better job to management base. It's all related to our organics program. This is a piece of equipment that'll be far more efficient and effective. You're mowing the grass before you drive over it, essentially. So we think long-term, it's gonna prove to be very valuable to us. But, but it is a new investment, it's a different way of doing things, for sure.
Do you think there's savings on the labor end? Or is that...
I believe so. It's far more effective.
Yeah, it's a twofold. I mean, really, all you've been doing is...
Want to come to the podium, Todd. I'll bring people in the audience.
We've been doing all of our mowing with gang mowers, which, so there will be a savings as far as time. Presently, right now, we mow with our gang mowers and I go back and most of the days do a second cut on athletic fields just to re-get the grass. The gang mowers are real mowers and I lay it down, rough cut mower, has individual deck and I'm gonna do it's better. They're faster, they're easier to train people. Right now, we only have a few people that are allowed to drive, and our extensive staff of three. It's tough to drive because you're looking behind you what you gotta hit. The, the purpose of the rough cut mower for the organics is we can change the deck height in rough cut mower within 20 minutes onsite with a gang mower, you gotta bring back to the shop, set it all up. But on the staff side of it, it'll allow us to carry two pieces of equipment onsite. Presently, we mow everything here and then we hit all the outside sites. And it takes the large John Deere tractor and the rough cut, um, gang mower and a person and a piece of equipment to go somewhere if we are afforded to get the rough cut mower. Will reduce our mowing time, but also our transportation time. We'll be able to bring a gager with us, chromer to line the field, or it's an in-field drag with two people in a truck, so it's gonna send less equipment out and it's also gonna send less time because we get multiple pieces out there. I am working on the write-up for Tom, but I did, I will put this out there, if I did talk with my staff after our last meeting, if we were to be offered the choice, we would rather defer the front cut mower just because of what this gains us. Presently, right now, we're so short of staff as far as training staff than anything we can do efficiently, especially to keep up with the organics demand, the amount of mowing. We cut and lay in the organics, so it's not like we're bagging it, so every time we miss a cut or the delay, we're doing multiple mows. So this rough cut will allow us the efficiency that we're lacking nowadays to keep up with the organics mowing.
Awesome, thank you.
Tom, was that, it wasn't appropriations originally. Were those items, did you move them to bonding in your, in your big number now at this point?
Yeah, wrapped up. If I can just get back to the slide and show you...
Oh, is it? Is the rough cut moved to bonding?
It was appropriations, but Tom...
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, it's included in...
So that was...
Yeah, the 168067.
Okay, it's included in the community, okay.
I think there's three total, three pieces there.
So right now, it's not affecting our net budget anyways.
Yeah, so, because it's the same thing.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, that answer, Donna. Thanks, Peter.
No, no, I had, I had the same question. So that's a great question.
Peter, if I can, I, I just want to add as far as I expect, to make sure that the expectations for Wednesday's meeting is understood. So, and this is really to Councilon Hamel's suggestion that there's other areas that could have some attention given to it. I hope people understand is that as far as any recommendations to where schools should provide some attention, we won't be discussing that at our meeting. We will discuss the net appropriation, which is prescribed by law, but we won't be unless the school department and the school board comes forward and says, you know what, we took Councilon Hamel's advice and we can cut, you know, whatever, we're not bringing it up, just so you know, as far as on an individual line item service basis. But it's definitely an option, it's on the municipal side, it's, you know, it is open for discussion for the other things, because I think you're talking about the Gore Palmer Building.
Can I ask a question where it gets a little, we need to look at it going forward, but it's kind of come up in conversations tonight. It's kind of this strange thing. What was referenced tonight is consideration, you know, is our impact fees on the table to help with the budget, are reserves on the table to help with the budget? Where do those conversations take place and how do you, how do you as, as a body feel about reserves and using reserves if that was a place we needed to go? Was that an open conversation or a concerning conversation or...
We don't, we don't have reserves, so I don't think that, in terms of these items, I think the place for that conversation to happen is here. And while we're all present to talk about whether or not, you know, are we maximizing all of our funding sources, I think is really the question we want to ask. These are real needs that we have in the budget right now. But even when it comes to capital projects, that, that's not something that the school board decides or that I decide how it gets funded. That's something that the town manager usually makes those recommendations and I get ultimately the town council approves that.
So while we tend to focus on expenses, conversations around revenues would be appropriate for Wednesday evening for us as well.
So that, okay.
Any revenue source?
You're talking about fund balance?
Or, I mean, the conversation at the table tonight was, you know, we had a brief conversation about impact fees. If there is some balance in impact fees, is it appropriate or not appropriate to consider that? And I just wanted to get a sense whether that, that's a good thing or bad thing from your perspective. That was a conversation?
We discussed it as a, as a potential way to manipulate the figures, but, you know, I mean, but it, but, but that's ultimately your decision, right?
So it would be okay, we, I mean, you wouldn't, I mean, all I'm trying to do is make sure that if we had that conversation, you're aware of it and...
Yes. Yeah, as long as you're, I think that the difference or the nuances that you can't say, well, we're not gonna let you do the Eight Corners parking project, but we will allow you to use fund balance to fund the classrooms. That would be, that would not be a good idea.
So that would just throw your number.
But I think, but I think here we should have this real conversation here while everybody, while you have to report to the council.
Peter, if I'm understanding Tom correctly, though, it's not like these impact fees are sitting there waiting to get spent. I mean, they are, he's, he's allocating these towards debt service.
Well, there's 450,000 to be spent and historically we've used it toward debt service. If you choose to use it for something else, it's not available for debt service.
Correct, so, and, and it's in here currently as debt service.
That's wrong.
Yes, okay.
But there's 450,000...
Sure, but the typical practice is not to touch it for two years later.
So when we say there's $450,000 in it, that would also, we'd have a whole new convention on when we even touch that money.
And there'll be receipts from this year that we don't even have accounting on at this point.
Because actually Scarborough Downs is pretty, I mean, some of those impact fees will start to roll in, won't they?
In another couple months.
Yeah, I would fully expect we'll be certainly at our historical average and probably beating it. You know, will we have a year like we did two years ago? Probably not, but I think it's gonna be a fairly steady stream.
Are the Scarborough Downs impact fees deferred in any way through the, the tax?
No.
No. Just the tax piece.
The dollars.
So do you collect that upon building permits or do you collect that upon building completion?
Building permits. Yep.
We asked for occupancy permits, they said no.
As we talk about this particular fund, I hope people understand is that, because, believe me, I remember when the impact fees were approved and it was very contentious, especially amongst developers, but the most recent approval is actually the fir, it is the first capital project that was funded by the impact fee versus using it as an operating expense to cover the debt service related. So not to make the plug now, I think it's a little short-sighted if we simply raid that account now, while there can be an argument made because of this, it's because you need to really look at what's gonna happen over the next three to five years and how that supports the budget overall, because you're just shooting yourself in the foot down the road, in my opinion.
Well, so I guess the question for this conversation, if we're at 3.6, do we think that's where we are and that will pass the first time through?
I was happy with the budget before the adjustments, Peter.
Yeah.
Okay, that's...
I would think we draw, make a judgment on that once we complete our work on Wednesday night. But I'm fine with the way the school budget is. With the $137,000 adjustment, I think that's quite appropriate. Job well done.
Thank you.
No, I feel this, I feel the same way. And, and like Mr. Baybine, I could have taken the budget just the way it is. I mean, not the way after first reading, but when it first came in, because as I've always said, I'm looking at down the line. I mean, when the final mill rate comes in, as long as it's not more than 3%, I'm fine with it. With re-balance, whatever, it would be that way, so.
And to the great work that Kate's done, generally speaking, the budgets that I, at least I've been a part of, there's always been a natural adjustment to the school's budget through refinement as the numbers get more, you know, better known, whether it's anthem insurance or what, contracts or whatever. So I don't look at this 137,000 as extraordinary by any means, I think it's just natural, which speaks to your work, so thank you.
It's the work. Are you looking for a House seat to weigh in or, I'm confused with where you're going?
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to get it.
Because here's what I, so my thoughts would be, I don't think the budget as presented at first read would have passed. I think this will. Would I like to see it slightly lower? Yes. And yet, I think, again, the, the conversation around what, what we're filling for and, I mean, we're, this, this budget has a lot of really great investments in it.
Mm-hmm.
No doubt. And we've still come much closer to the goal, the stated goal than we were. So I, I feel pretty confident that we can get this thing passed on the, and, and yes, lurking in the background, and we've agreed to leave it out of the conversation, but lurking in the background is in fact a residential rebound, which we all know will have a positive impact at the end. I think it was important to leave it out for a lot of the reasons that we've stated in previous meetings, but, so that's where I am at. I, I feel very comfortable with this. And there's still some refinements that could come out of the next meeting.
I'm looking forward to Wednesday night. I think there's several things that we can do that will improve the municipal budget without doing harm to the goals that the town manager set forth in the original budget. So I don't think 3.6 is where we're gonna end up. I think it's gonna be much closer to 3.
Yeah, I'd like to follow through on the process and see where we are.
Great.
Just to kind of go back to the impact fees conversation, the outfitting the new classrooms, if, if this is still accurate, is scheduled to be appropriated, the 118,000. And then you can always decide to have the conversation again next year, January, February timeframe, you know, earlier than we did this year, about whether or not we want to access impact fees for the second set of Eight Corners classrooms or the Pleasant Hill module, our modular, because that's, we're not gonna order them right now. We're gonna, we're gonna see how enrollment flushes out in the fall through December and then be coming to have that conversation. And I think it would be smart for our community to, again, go back to the school impact fees. Do we want to fund these modulators in that way as that fee was originally intended for? Or do we want to go forward and bond the money to, to purchase those units at that time? But we have a little bit of time to have that conversation.
And all 500,000, all 500,000 of this is appropriated right now, correct, on the slide?
No, the traffic redesign is scheduled to be bonded, I believe.
Okay.
If I'm reading, or actually, let me just stop here. The classrooms, the second bullet is scheduled to be appropriated. The traffic redesign is scheduled to be appropriated. I don't think that got shifted. I believe, if I'm reading. And then the Eight Corners classrooms were scheduled to be bonded.
So I think I asked this question April about a week ago, but I can't remember the answer. Was there, seeing that those six classrooms include the two modulators, the two modular buildings, so there's four classrooms there, correct?
Yes.
And then we're talking...
No, oh, right here?
Yeah, there's six classrooms.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Right?
Yep.
And then that also includes a classroom in Pleasant Hill and a classroom in Blue Point, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if, was there any discussion of making that four classrooms because the second modular building would bleed into FY '21?
Did I ask that right?
You did. When you asked me, I think it was coming from a place of, we had talked about as a finance committee whether or not there was an incentive to bundle some of the expenditures or whether it was better to order four sets of classroom material, like if there was any added benefit to doing all six, a cost savings. And we had said in some cases, you know, for the, for furnishings, it absolutely was a cost savings to do them all together, but then other areas like Chromebooks, we were not gonna see a, a savings to outfit the technology portion.
Tom, good question for the, in the past, you've done these types of things like the traffic redesign. redesign, if that's an appropriation in the past, has that been bonded?
It's scheduled to be bonded, I guess.
Okay, so the traffic is bonded, but the furniture is appropriations? When we, I think I saw, in the past, we put furniture appropriate, in bonding.
We have, and we've, not felt good, good about it, I would say, but, yeah. So when I went through and gave my recommendations, I tried to be thoughtful towards what the items were and what their life expectancy was, so there's certainly more room to go there if you wish, I think it gets more challenging.
Is it for us, is it possible for us to decide, like, so to me, I know, I understand that all of these could fall under impact fees, but the top one stands out to me as eight corners is overcrowded, it's getting more kids, more teachers, that is directly proportionate to more classrooms, the population, that seems to me to be like a no-brainer, that should have been used, that should be impact fees that paid for that.
Well, to be clear, the, the financing, the financing piece is not determined by the schools. The school puts out a budget, it says we need the funds, and then the town finance office, the town manager, and to some extent the town council decide where the money comes from.
Okay, so...
So what we're doing here is we're making a recommendation, like, hey, y'all, wouldn't this be a cool thing to do with impact fees? And then, having put that out there, that, then it would be up to the council to decide whether it was a good use of those money.
Right, but I guess because the council isn't, doesn't have the ability to say, we picked this one, this one and not that one? Is it...
We're not, I don't think we're really, all, all we're picking is just how it's going to be paid for, but how it's going to be paid for.
So they would have the authority to say this project is impact fees.
So you would be able to say, traffic redesign, we'd like to use impact fees for that, this we'd like to bond, this we'd like to appropriate.
As long as it's consistent with past practices.
Well, in, in this case, remind, remember, we have an ordinance that governs and a state statute that governs, so we've got to be very clear and careful about where we're using impact fees.
Right.
I don't disagree with what, with your assessment, I think that probably would qualify, in my opinion.
So, sorry, I just need, I just want to clear this up, so when we did our presentation about the modulars at eight corners, why was that different than something like this?
It was out of budget cycle?
Because you wanted it, you wanted approval two months early.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a decent point, I think to the extent that we can keep things through the budget process, it's better and cleaner. I see nods, heads nodding from counselors. I know it's not always possible, and that was a bit of unexpected, and I, I think you're already anticipating your future need in that regard, so to the extent we can stay on budget or include it in the budget process, the better.
So then now would be the time that you would want to talk about those last two bullets, if collectively you think using impact fees is, is the right way to go, because otherwise you'll be out of budget cycle again the next time you have this conversation.
Right.
I'm going to eat my own words, but in that case, you want to know more before you think, you need more information before you say yes, so that might be a carve-out where you say, all right, when we know more, come back to us and we'll have a conversation whether it's needed, and it's the right way to do it.
It's important to remember, too, that you're not going to issue bonds for a project that hasn't occurred yet. So, even if we said in our budget proposal, we anticipate bonding these items, once the project actually was either undertaken or changed or the scope was changed, we wouldn't bond the money just because we said it in the budget, we would bond it because we actually needed it.
Right, I was thinking more if you were going to use impact fees. So the nuance there would be, we wouldn't want to take it out of the CIP budget until we knew that we were going to have a funding source, so...
I think you could still put it in the CIP budget. And then you would say your funding source could be impact fees or could be bond.
Right.
Because in, in the budget, all projects are identified how they're funded, there's an abbreviation code system that's used.
Well, and I think the difference between, between the, you, this is on your horizon now, you know that there's a possibility that we might need to come to you and ask for the second set of classrooms at eight corners and whether we use impact fees or not, but like, I feel like this year when we did it, it was, it was sudden, you know?
Did I, did I hear at a prior meeting that according to state statute, we aren't charging as much as we could for impact fees?
The statute doesn't tell you what the fees are, the fees need to bear a relationship to the need. In our case, those, and frankly, that's something we need to update because it references a proposal from back in the early 2000s that went to the state funding.
The updating of the chart.
So as you do your long-range work and have better clarity on what your future needs are, we should, we'd be wise to reference that plan now?
Actually, that's been on our agenda, too, all the impact fees, I don't think have been updated.
They get updated more.
Well, but I mean...
The fee is updated in.
But, but conversation about, is it, is it the right, as far as the relationship?
Is it the right amount?
Yeah. Is it?
I think it's a part of the growth discussion that we need to have as a community.
Peter, if I can just, so I don't remember who brought it up, I, it might have been Hillary, who talked about, let's say this chart and the use of impact fees, so this is more of a plea to my co-counselors, and that is that, you really, if you think about the core of the conversation, you're really getting into policy statements on how you want to manage money. And so, and the reason is that when you make those statements, then you can rely on those going forward in every year so that you're consistently applying it, so it becomes, this process should become easier. So what throws that into kind of havoc is when you make policies such as a capital budget policy or a reserve policy or whatever other policies that we might have in the fiscal policy, and then say, we're going to now, not plan for it and take it out of the budget, it really, you have to ask about the policy-making process and the value of that, because you don't want to have to, I mean, I believe there's value to it as long as you stick to it, and sometimes you have to swallow that pill because it's a little bit bigger this year than it was last year. So, you know, I don't think there's a policy around the actual use of impact fees, there's the ordinance that prescribed the impact fees, but I don't think there's a policy around the use of the funds, so, other than what's prescribed by statute and what was in the ordinance, so I just, you know, since I'm, since I'm not here much longer, I just, you know, for everyone to consider what is the next policy, and then whether or not there is a commitment to stick with the policy from a good management perspective, because it impacts, that ability impacts the overall credit rating because they look at the policies and then they compare it to your financial performance when you get your credit rating and your bond rating so that you can then borrow at a better rate. I didn't realize it was that impactful, I'll take an applause.
Four knots.
So I think where we are, I think we are really, the next step would be, as several have suggested, is where do we get to Wednesday night with our sort of deliberations and work will better define where we are, I think, Bill, you're, you're suggesting, you're optimistic that that'll get us to a, a different place. So I think, take a pause, see where we are Wednesday night, and then, and then figure out what that means for them.
And I would suggest that, even though I might not be in agreement, the very first request should be that we accept, based on what I'm hearing as a consensus, is to accept the two reports that were given to us tonight, would be a very easy step, and then move on to the next part of it.
You mean Wednesday night, they'd talk about, if we want to make any adjustments?
Additional after that. So take these, because these were vetted before us, take these, and there appears to be a consensus, take these and either approve or have a conversation, and then, then take anything after that.
Bill, are you able to share a little bit of your insight that leads you feeling so optimistic?
No, I think I'll wait till Wednesday night. She's going to tune in on Wednesday.
Just ensure, audience.
I'm equally interested, you know?
Tom, do you have any insight?
There's a, there's a town council question, I had sent, because of finance, I had sent to Dawn, Tom, and Sean, my questions, but would it be helpful for you guys to see those?
Yes.
For everybody?
I would say share it.
Sure.
And so all of us, as we generate questions, lead equals, soon, because it's Wednesday night.
Everybody at the table.
Everybody.
Share them.
Sean, you were saying, share, everybody at the table?
I say so, yeah.
Everybody?
It's public record anyways, why not?
Share.
Do you guys have any questions for us that we can answer, or anything that you would like us to present or share with you in advance of Wednesday to make your decision-making process easier?
I mean, if I'm hearing Sean right...
This is a go.
That's a go, so, I mean, this is a going once, going twice thing, right? I mean, as far as, but on the school side.
At least on the school side.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, if you're adopting as...
I mean, there's nothing we're going to do.
Don't be surprised if I'm not voting in favor of it, but I'll still accept the motion.
Well, the only, the only...
It's not surprising anymore.
I know. I mean, the only thought would be, so I, I think Sean's suggestion was, we take these as the starting points, you know? If we get to where Bill's predicting, sounds like we'll be good. If we don't get to where Bill's predicting, and we're still, you know, 430 up, what's our recommendation? I think that's, that's the only place that...
And I guess that's my question, because, so what I'm hearing, is my, my guess is there's, maybe perhaps there's things that are overestimated and underestimated, and I feel like that's where Bill's going with this. So, if Bill's magic doesn't get you to 3%, are we...
Or closer.
Right, so I guess my question is, just because we might as well have this out right here, is it going to be a finance committee that's not leaving the building until you guys are at 3%? Or, like, how is it going to get approached? Because, because I think it's a little bit, like, I can respect Bill's, because he, he might be, I understand what he's doing in the sense where maybe he doesn't have all, I don't know, I'm not going to speak for you, but I guess I'm curious as a counselor and, and watching it unfold on Wednesday, you know, I've heard Katie say, this number's close enough, or thinking if it dips a little bit, I'm happy with it, you know, is that going to be the mindset of the finance committee on Wednesday? Or is the finance committee's objective is, we're not leaving the room until we are at 3%? So I'm guessing asking this of...
Those three.
The finance committee.
I think this, from the school side, before you, before anybody answers that, if I could tack on one thing, I think on the school side, we would like to know whether or not we are going to be given a different appropriation. I mean, we want to know whether it's the intent of the finance committee to split the difference with us 60/40, or 60, you know, whatever has been said as precedent.
I can only confirm my vote.
Those ideas are already in their head.
I can only tell you what my opinion is, and I would not vote for that, for a different appropriation, but that's, that's my personal...
I mean, I, it's, I'm certainly not trying to put anyone on the spot, and I just feel like it's a component of the conversation that we should have.
From a process standpoint, though, I think what I'm hearing, you, you're asking is that if there was a change, that is where it would occur, and that's where it has always occurred, is that fair to say? Right?
At the finance committee meeting.
But given that not all of us would be present at the table, not present here, if there are plans to ask for a reduction in the school budget further, we'd like to have those conversations now.
And I guess that's where I was getting, like, if there's, let's just lay that out right now.
So, you're asking us to solve for a question that had, you know, we really haven't finished, asking all, follow the questions yet?
Yep.
So, I...
It's a little, it's a little difficult, but if I'm hearing Council Katerina, Council Foley, Council Baybine, and myself, we're good with what you've got done. Yeah, so that, that discussion would not influence us.
I mean, again, if there was some changes between now and then, that puts that a little lower, and you throw that out, that's going to make me happy.
Of course. And we are obviously prepared to have this.
But I don't, I don't have a vote at the finance table, so that's like where this whole thing, and honestly, I think this is a great discussion, because this has been where I have always gotten stuck, and why, it's like, I don't have that say, you know, but I can, it can tell you where I'm at, and, and if this were to come in front of, of the council, but I, I think, again, we're in a much better place than we were, and anything between where we are today and, and closer to that goal is going to be fantastic.
I mean, it's also hard to have that answer, because I specifically asked Dawn when he said, well, you know, there might be some room, I said, well, where on the school side is there room to remove? And he couldn't answer.
Then you got me in trouble by giving your line item, you don't want, you're not legally able to give you...
I mean, we're asking for something that...
You can give it, we just don't...
But even on Wednesday, they can, all they can say is, all right, we would like you to see you do a further cut of 25,000 or 50,000 or whatever, he can't say... That's why I asked the question earlier about the number, so if there was a number, right, I mean, let's just pretend it was 150,000, just, you know, like, obviously, we're all looking at numbers, so, so, oh, Katie must have been inferring that, potentially, but we can't, that's where this whole thing gets tricky.
Can I, can I ask a couple of que-, okay, so to maybe help out, for the, on the school side, is there nine or are there eight attack positions right now?
Nine.
Nine. So those are not going up, correct?
Not going up.
Correct, so is it possible?
I would not say that.
Well, sorry.
We have budgeted for...
Team plus IP session.
Okay, so there's, so, so it's not, you're not, you're unwilling to say that's a ceiling? You're feeling good, it's, you're not, you're, it's not, we're not at the point, well, maybe that will go down.
I will literally give you this real-life example, the other day we had a finance committee meeting where Allison said her famous quote, we're literally one phone call away, and before we even left the meeting, if you watch as Alicia has, you'll hear me go, because literally we had a phone call as soon as Allison left that meeting, that changed our numbers.
Sure.
And so I just, I don't want to, I don't want to be quoted as saying something that, you know, we're not able to say.
And I don't want you guys to, that's why I was trying to set the right expectation. The out-of-district tuition, that was the surprise $120,000, right, that was relatively recent development, is that only going in one direction, which is down, or could that go up as well, or is that something that you're feeling good about, or...
It could go in either direction.
Other direction, okay.
Which is really the tricky part with nickel and diming the school budget, is because it's, it is so volatile, and that's not because we're trying to be mysterious or less than transparent, it just literally is that, that's the reality of it. But one, one thing I would just bring attention to when you look at this FY '20 budget, if you're looking at the bottom line, the education net budget, we're talking about a $3 million increase from last year to this year, for the whole entire school budget. And so, again, I know we talk about percentages a lot, but like, putting that kind of big picture and thinking about our enrollment demands and our incoming specialized service demands.
Yeah, I, I, I think we, we set a process, we say we're going to follow through on it. I know this has been a great discussion, great progress, I feel very good about where we are and how we're trending, I think we have, we've got a, you know, full and fair discussion, it's been more like a town council meeting than a finance committee meeting, which, that's not necessarily bad, but just a reminder, but I, I would feel most comfortable with following through on the, on the process and, you know, seeing where we are on Wednesday, and especially given the fact that the deck's still pitching a little bit.
I, I just want to recommend, actually, Tom kind of scribbled a note, I'd actually like to see the school's budget reduced by $2,046, because right now, the actual increase is 6.66%. So if you get at least a different number in there, it would be a little less supersens... So, so I think that, April's question is actually a very good...
More increase, more increase.
There you go again.
But, no, I think it's an important question, it's about the democratic process that we go through, because that's what I think more people are actually disappointed about because of the roles and responsibilities that we have, and so trying to answer some of the questions in advance, because, just as an example, by the way, Mrs. Sizemore's probably, as well as Kate and Ruth, have been here longer than I have, and having an amendment at the first reading is not unusual, it's happened in the past, having an amendment between the finance committee's recommendation and the actual second reading, last year we had 500,000, three years ago it was 2 million, and it come, and literally we didn't know about it until the very second, until that second meeting, so that's, I mean, technically speaking, each counselor has that right to make that determination, it might be a citizen who got into someone's ear and, you know, was the last one and said, you know, you need to go down, or you need to go up, or whatever it might be, so it's, it's extremely difficult to commit, so, keep that kind of in mind, I guess.
And I guess, you know, I guess where I would be is, you know, we've worked through this tonight, we still have some, you know, I'm anxious to hear Bill and see, and see what Bill's got in mind, I've got some things in mind. So if, if your question was, from my perspective, could we commit right now that this is it? I'm a little uncomfortable with that until we have the conversation Wednesday night, but if our commitment could be by Wednesday night, then we can make some type of indication back on where we are, I mean, clearly, though, if, if you went around the table, you certainly hear where the majority view is. So, I, I don't know how others feel, I, I, Sean, whether it's okay to keep it open and Bill keep it open to Wednesday night, if, if we find, if Bill's got the, the silver bullet that gets us closer, then I think we can then, you know, kind of move forward, does, is that...
Well, you can't take a vote at a workshop. All you can get is a sense of where the temperature is, and I think you've got that sense.
Yeah, no, we have, and I, and I think, I suspect most of you will be there Wednesday night. So we'll have that conversation, we'll find out where we are. Does that work for all of you, or is that a?
We just wanted to be sure that we weren't in a situation where, come Wednesday night, there were unanswered questions that, or questions that needed answers in order to make your decision on sort of appropriations. It sounds like that's not the case. You guys have all the information you need, so we look forward to this thing. This thing is a.
I would just review the request. It sounds like we've got a lot of work to do Wednesday night. So to the extent that you have questions that require some research on my part, please get them to me, so we can have a productive, focused discussion.
Wednesday at 4:00. I'm kidding.
An hour is better than being put on the spot, so anytime in advance is appreciated.
For the public, it's 5:30.
5:30.
3:45 on Wednesday.
Wednesday, May 8th, at 5:30.
Is that prior to a town council meeting?
No.
No. No, that's just.
So there's no end in sight.
That's the part I don't need.
What's happening then after?
So what is, what is the schedule from? So we will, we'll make the recommendations. The finance committee will make the recommendation, but it will be talked about at the next town council meeting, right? Right, that recommendation will be put in writing, and it will be provided to the full council, to the public. And typically, as a courtesy, the first amendment in second reading is to accept the finance committee's recommendations.
But that happens on the, that Wednesday town council meeting, the?
On the 15th.
15th.
But if I can understand, sorry, I just wanted to recap, because I think what you got, so after your second reading, our second reading is like literally the next day. So I think what we're all trying to say is that if you have an answer for us on, is that what you were saying? You'll have an answer in terms of what the school appropriation will be on Wednesday night, so we're not like working all.
Recommendation.
Right.
It'd be a recommendation.
Recommendation, and obviously, it's not.
But you heard, but you heard where.
Yes, okay.
Right.
I just don't want to be up all night on Wednesday, whatever. You're not going to sleep until this is done.
Anything else, anybody?
The second reading's on the 15th. So this Wednesday is the finance, right? I was saying, will we have?
Everybody okay? Anything else? Anybody? So are there any public comment, or anybody that would like to come up and have a conversation? Sean?
Since you asked, we've traded emails with the council in the past couple of days. And, you know, just looking over the past four years, our spending and the ask of our taxpayers has lagged behind inflation. And inflation's been higher than, I think, what we anticipated, well, than the 3%. It's just something to keep in mind, that as you squeeze things today, that's going to come back in the future and typically require a reset. So balance what you do with the reality of the topic.
Thank you. So with that motion to adjourn?
The workshop.
The way it works out.
We don't have to.
We're just done?
We're done.
Thank you.
Can we start this thing early, or is that? We can't start early.